Clerk of the Royal Court.
Senator Regis Agitaya. Senator Rukubai Kikuo Inabo. Senator Jonathan Shoysal.
Oi.
Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte.
Oi.
Senator TJ Imru Ramasaw.
Oi.
Senator Mark U. Erbelau Rudim.
Oi.
Senator Umi Sangabao.
Oi.
Senator Kazuki L. Tops Sungino.
Oi.
Senator Andrew Tabelwal.
Oi.
Senator Mason Niravangal Whipps.
Oi.
Floor Leader Cecilil Aldebel.
Oi.
Vice President Krymar Yur.
Oi.
President Hoccon Spauless.
Oi.
Mister President Tanguania Kurum.
Maria Kurum and Senator Agitaya excused. But the floor leader did the Senator Aldebel and the other one did the other one. Senator Aldebel.
Mister President, I'm going to give you a little information. The vice president and the senators are going to be present. The meeting is over. The more I want to do, the more I want to do. I want to tell the journal, the eight-day journal, first regular session, my six-day journal, first special session, my eight-day journal, second regular session. If the journal is not allowed, it will be moved. Blanket the motion, adopt, take it, or move the journal.
The motion is not allowed, so we will have to go over it today. Go ahead. The floor leader.
Mister President, I want to do next item. The note, communication, the vice president may, I want to see the communication, the press communication 1143. It has transmitted executive order number 447. The Regent's institute to sell compact review advisory group. Appointing the chief representative to give the compact review advisory. The note, the information. Direct for our information, I want to see the press communication 1144. It has signing statement to sell RPL, RPL 115, the international arbitration bill. Direct, the vice president, I want to see the press communication 1145. The signing statement, RPL 116, the judicial work of Ireland, the judge of Ireland. Direct, the note, the press communication 1146, the signing statement. It gives the RPL 117. It has the signing statement, it gives the organizing ministries related immigration, labor, culture, and historical preservation, housing and environment. The information, the note, I want to see the communication, the vice president, press cam 1147. It has the president, the name is Mr. Nirey Blas Matuul. The Ministry of Human Resource, Culture, Tourism and Development. The note, the second, communication, appropriate part of the calendar. The next item, I want to see, the number seven. The House of Delegates Communication 1121. It gives adoption, Senate Joint Resolution 114 ST1, that is, to declare the law. The House of Delegates, I want to see the communication 1122. It has transmitted House Bill 1118, that's one S, for consideration, action of Senate. I want to see the main, the next item, item eight. Standing committee reports. It will be moved, adopt the Standing Committee Report 1131, it gives the Senate Bill 1117.
The second. The motion is not allowed, so we will have to go over the education, Senator Tabelwal, will listen to the report, Senator Tabelwal.
Good morning, President, and floor. I want to see the one.
...
So assuming a girl came in, we're about to tell you. Ah, Emma was better than you. I will not say you're going to get the deserve to get that money. My name is, we're going to have a billion for a Ibo bank. I'm going to high school. You're going to get the same, same benefit. Then, there are financial need. I'm going to take it down, all of a sudden, I'm going to go. Then, do you, do you adore? You're going to adore me to save our parents. I'll rent them around. I'm getting consistent. As soon as financial, like, I come this, she's going to do it with me. It identify was it. My time, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to learn it. You're like, I'm going to get ready, my clothes. You're going to adore, but we're going to see you, you're going to have a blue. Then, I don't know, okay, well. As soon as we're going to have a Ibo bank. It's a little, it's a room and board. You know, I will, I'm going to have a, I'm going to be a little show. It's a little bit of board. Yeah, so I'm going, I'm going to, you know? I got, then that's the, I was saying, yeah, I'm going, I'm going to come in, take a lesson, he said, was it? I'm saying, I'm telling, I'm saying, I'm telling. Then, I'm going to fit the purpose, it's telling you that's more like. Again, he doesn't show an adra, I don't know. I hope I'm right. I hope that's the intent that you'll be.
Digangod. Senator Inavo.
I like killed the chairman, Tabalwal, the president, Tamsula.
Act the clarifier, sell sixty thousand, my total, I'm a dealer. Sixty thousand, I will be in my own world, I was saying, so I go to go to the. The way. Do you expect I will tell her that I think I'm expecting to do? So you do all the tell her, I'm going to tell you, it's here, I'm going to go, I do me, it's here. More, I don't want to see, no, it's here, the teller, I'm going to, I'm going to see, it's here, I'm going to tell her. I will, I'm going to do, it's here, I'm a dealer. Do you, I'll do, I'm going to see, I'm going to do. And more, I'm going to take a, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to say, I'm going to say, I'm going to say, I'm going to be a teller, I'm going to go, I'm going to go, I'm going to go, I'm going to see, I'm going to do, I'm going to do, I'm going to do. And we're telling you, see, I give them, I'm taking, it's here, I'm a dealer. Do you, I will tell her, I'm going to be a P C C, I'm going to see, I get that, so I'm. So I'm going to make it, I'm going to make it, it's here, I give them, I'm going to make it, it's here, I give them, I'm going to make it, it's here. So you got this, I'm going to define, I'm going to.
A question, I can see, I'm going to, 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 I'm going to. Me, I'm going to decide, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Tell check in. As soon as we get a, I'm going to, I'm going to. Tell check in. For, for roaming, maybe I'm going to, 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 I'm going to. As soon as we, I'm going to, 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 I'm going to. I will go, I'm going to, 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 I'm going to. The P C C, and I'm going to decide, I'm going to. He doesn't care, he doesn't care, I'm going to administer, I'm going to, how and how much? So you got, I'm going to, 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 I'm going to. Then, why you will go, by specific, it. I'll last class, I already, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. You're going to go, I'm going to open ended. Yeah, I'm going to, 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 I'm going to. Just a Patrick, you are we willing? I'm going to, I'm going to. A agency, but P C C, I'm going to, I'm going to, the way they see fit. According to the law. It gives, do you have a, so I'm. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to.
It's a, it's a. But, at the time, I, P C C, I'm going to, education assistance, I'm going to. See, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. At the time, I'm going to, 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 I'm going to. A report, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. In fact, I see, I do, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. City program. I'm going to, I'm going to. My mother, that's what I say. I'm going, my M O E, my P C C, my, I'm going to, I'm going to. Take a, I'm going to, 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 I'm going to. I'm going to qualify, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to make it. I be, I'm going to, 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 I'm going to. It's a little, I'm going to. But do you have to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. But as soon as I'm going to, 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 I'm going to. I told you, okay, so long.
Senator Inavo.
Mr. President, I said, I'm a, page six, I'm going to come in, I report. Or sell, I'm going to, I'm going to. I, I was a policy and purpose. In. Hmm, I'm going to talk, I was a assistance. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Tuition, room and board, I'm a recipient. And me, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Man, I'm going to, I was saying, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. In Marcel School, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Do you have, I'm going to, I'm going to. Man, I'm going to, I was a, P C C, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Palace, I'm going to, I'm going to, chairman. I'm going to implement it, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Hmm, Emma, I'm better than you. Hmm, Ibo bank, I'm P M A, I get it, yeah. Ma, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Ah, I'm going to, I'm going to. Hmm, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Better. I believe. I mean, that's sort of what I, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I get that, I'm going to, I'm going to. I hope I'm going to clear, say, Mr. President, Tamsula.
Digangod. Senator Mariur.
Oh, President, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Education assistance, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. It's a, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I, I, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Assistance, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. So you get, I'm going to. The second thing, I, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to.
Kumsula, I like, you're going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. There's more, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. The school, the public school, I do free. Dealing, I'm going to, private school, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Plus, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Minister of Education. It's, I don't know, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. And when I'm a, I'm a president, who is, is in here. A director, communication, I'm going to. My life, I'm going to, I'm going to. Plus, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Expense, it's telling you, I'm going to. My, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. It's telling, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. And I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Tell them. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Five thousand, and then, I was a, I'm going to. And when I go, so I'm going to, I'm going to. But I'm going to estimate, I was a. A nine months, it's telling us, it's ten thousand. My local, I'm going to, I'm going to. That's the, I'm going to, I'm going to. Plus, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Why, I'm going to, I'm going to. Do you have a member, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I don't know, okay, I be, I be, I be. I be, I be, expense, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Get it, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. It's expensive, I'm, 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 I'm expensive. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Then, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Let's, 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 one time, I'm going to, next school year. There, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to forever. Directly, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. President, I'm P C C, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I got, I'm going to, I'm going to, separate institution. Palau Community, I'm going to, I'm going to. Two different. I had, I guess, I don't meet, I don't, I don't, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Like, different institution, and different activity, I'm going to. A P C C, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. So I'm going to survive, I'm going to, I'm going to. And I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. Get it, I'm going to, I'm going to. But I'm going to, I'm going to. Do you have a, I'm going to, I'm going to. Get it, I'm going to help it. Ding, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. So I'm going to, I'm going to. Is she, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Did I look at, I'm going to, expense, I'm going to. And over half a million. Then, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm, she, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to. And I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to.
Senator Rudim.
Mr. President, I'm going to, I'm going to. Mr. President, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. President, I'm going to, I'm going to. It's, I'm going to, I'm going to. 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 I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Instead, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. No, I get it, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. So, Mr. President.
Digangod. Soon, I digangod, it's, I'm going to, I'm going to. Standing committee, I report eleven thousand one, I do, oh. On talk. Namai. Floor leader.
President, I'm going to. So you got, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Reports. You're going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, first reading, I'm going to, I'm going to pass, I'm going to, first reading, eleven thousand, Senate Bill eleven thousand.
So you got motion, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to.
Senate Bill number eleven thousand. A bill for an act. To amend section eleven O one of title forty. Of the Palau National Code. To lower the rate of tax imposed on the first thirty thousand dollars in salary and wages. Received by a citizen employee. To add a new section fourteen O nine to title forty. That imposes an additional ten percent tax. On restaurants. To amend section seventeen O one of title forty. To increase the penalties for various tax offenses. To amend sections three seven O one and three seven O four. Of title seventeen. To increase the penalties for smuggling goods. And evading import taxes and for other related purposes. That is, I'm going to, I'm going to. Section eleven O one, title forty, Palau National Code. And what we want, that I talk, sell, sell, call, thirty thousand, I'm going to, I'm going to. We love, I love you. I'm going to, I'm going to. Section fourteen O nine, title forty. And more impose a additional ten percent, that I tax, I'm going to restaurant. I'm going to, I'm going to. Seventeen O one, title forty. And more, I'm going to, I'm going to. 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 And more, I'm going to, I'm going to. And I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. That is, I'm going to, I'm going to. Vice President, I'm Senate, Senator Gray Major. Senator Mark, I'm going to, I'm going to. My Senator Stevenson, J. Quarte.
So you got, I'm going to, I'm going to. Senator Mariur, I'm going to, I'm going to.
So, the President, you're going to, I'm going to. Did you, I'm going to, I'm going to. No, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Then. But you're going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Importation, I'm going to. I'm going to, 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 I'm going to. So you get, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I get it, I'm going to. I'm going to, 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 I'm going to. Oh, so I'm going to, I'm going to. So you get, I'm going to, I'm going to. Service tax, I'm going to, ten percent. I get, I feel, I feel, I feel, I feel, I feel, I feel. I'm going to, I'm going to. I get it, numbers, my presentation, I'm going to. Eh, so I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to. So you get, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Ah, I'm going to, I'm going to. So you get, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. The result, I'm a President, eh. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, up to eight thousand, I would do, I'm going to. About, I'm going to, I'm going to, four percent, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Ten thousand, I'm going to, I'm going to. Instead, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I get it, I'm going to, I'm going to. And then, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. My, I'm going to. Yeah, four percent, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Ah, you, ah, you, ah, you, your labor. More, I'm going to, I'm going to. And me, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Oh, train, I'm going to, I'm going to. More, I'm going to, training, program, my programmer, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. So you get, I'm going to, I'm going to. Hmm. Reduction, I'm going to, I'm going to. And I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Current system, I'm going to, I'm going to. 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 Enforcement, I'm going to, I'm going to. 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 I get it, I'm going to, I'm going to. I get it, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Hmm, I'm going to, I'm going to. At the time, eh. The President, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Pay, import tax, I'm going to, I'm going to. Including, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. And I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. And I'm going to, I'm going to. 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 And reform, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Then. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, the President, I'm going to, I'm going to. And I'm going to admit, eh. The Minister of Finance, I was, oh, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. And I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. At ten percent upfront. So you get, I'm going to, I'm going to. 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 And I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Ma. Ah, I'm going to, I'm going to. 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 Six percent, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Employ, I'm going to, I'm going to. 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 I get it, eh. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Sign, I'm going to, I'm going to. 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 And I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. So, the President.
So, the Senator Mariur. Soon, I digangod. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. On talk. Namai. Floor leader.
President, I'm going to, I'm going to.
I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. That is, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Floor leader.
President, I'm going to, I'm going to. Next, the bill, I'm going to, first reading. I'm going to pass, I'm going to, first reading, Senate Bill eleven thousand one.
So you got motion, I'm going to, I'm going to. Senator Quarte, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to.
Senate Bill number eleven thousand one. A bill for an act. To amend R P P L number eleven thousand three. The Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty One Budget Act. To authorize and appropriate four hundred fifty thousand from the Non-Communicable Diseases Fund. For the Vela Games Twenty Twenty One and for other related purposes. That is, I'm going to, I'm going to. R P P L number eleven thousand three. And me, F Y Twenty Twenty One Budget Act. And more authorize the appropriate, the four hundred fifty thousand. On Non-Communicable Disease Fund, the Morabela Games Twenty Twenty One. I'm going to, I'm going to. That is, I'm going to, I'm going to. Senator Stevenson, J. Quarte. Senator Vice President, I'm going to, Senate, Gray Major. Floor leader, I'm going to, Cecilil, I'm going to. Senator Andrew Tabalwal. Senator Kazuki, El Tapsoyino. My President, I'm going to, Senate, Hokons Paulas.
Senator Quarte.
So, the President, I'm going to, I'm going to. Sell, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, attachment, I'm going to, information. I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Sixteen percent, I'm going to, population, I'm going to. I'm going to, fifteen, I'm going to, four. Sixty-two percent, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Fifty-eight percent, I'm going to. Ah, adult, I'm going to, I'm going to. Fifty-five, five percent, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Ah, I'm going to, I'm going to. The, 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 the. So I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. So I'm going to, I'm going to. N C D Strategic Plan, so I'm going to, I'm going to. Or get it, I'm going to, I'm going to. 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 I'm going to physically active, I'm going to, I'm going to. 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 Ah, I'm going to, I'm going to. Alcohol abuse, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Hmm, I'm going to, I'm going to. President, eh. I'm going to, I'm going to. Sell, I'm going to, I'm going to. But I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. Ah, partnership, I'm going to. A P N O C, my governors association, I'm going to, I'm going to. And I was, I'm going to, I'm going to. Physical activities, so I'm going to, I'm going to. Leval, Saus, I'm going to, Palau N C D Plan. I'm going to, I'm going to. Moving forward, they are planning to be part of the Morabelau Games, part of the Morabelau Games and beyond. They said that they are not allowed to eat. 100,000 of the Morabelau Games and 115,000 by the Governor's Association, PNC. They are allowed to eat sports, physical activity facilities. They are allowed to eat the program, the Alzheimer's, although it is 2022 and beyond. They said that they are not allowed to eat. They are not allowed to eat. Mr. Iba Taito. That's all, President.
I think that the tax code is not allowed to use it. That's all, Senator Flo Lider. We will discuss the session. The tax code, we assign the chairman to the head, Senator Cuarte. Flo Lider.
President, the first reading. We will pass the House Bill 11-18-1S. The House bill, the clerk, the assignment.
Mr. Iba Taito.
House Bill Number 11-18-1S. A bill for an act to create a new Chapter 22 in Title 11 of the Palau National Code to enact laws pertaining to the lawful calibration of weight and measures and weighing and measuring equipment within the Republic of Palau. The tax code, Amatbei, of its Chapter 22, Title 11 of Palau National Code. The law allows the calibration of weight and measures by weighing and measuring equipment below. The tax code, Alul Dersi, the delegates, the delegates.
They said that the House bill, we assign the chairman to the chairman of the Cameron Center. The tax code is not allowed to use it.
That's all.
That's all, Senator Flo Lider.
President, the second reading. The move to pass the second reading to Senate Bill 11-17, ST1.
We will report on the discussion. We will report on the discussion. We will report on the second reading. Senator Songbao.
President, the discussion is not allowed. You have to point out that it is correct. You said that they are allowed to go to school. They are allowed to go to the facility. And then they are allowed to go to the PCC. They are not allowed to go to the school. Is that correct? Are you going to the high school?
Yes, it is. I think that the clerk ordered it.
Mr. President, you said that you are going to the clarify. You said that you are going to the clarify. You said that you are going to the high school. Because they are allowed to go to the school. And they are not allowed to go to the high school. They are not allowed to go to the school. They said that you are going to the clarify. You said that you are going to the high school.
Mr. Iba Taito.
The way is that they are not allowed to go to the school. They are not allowed to go to the school. They are not allowed to go to the school. They are not allowed to go to the school. They are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school.
They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to use tuition. Room and board. They qualified the government to use it. They said that they are not allowed to use it. They said that they are not allowed to use it. They said that they are not allowed to use it. They said that they are not allowed to use it. They said that they are not allowed to use it. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. The tax code is not allowed to use it. The tax code is not allowed to use it.
That's all.
That's all, Senator Flo Lider.
President, the second reading. The third reading. They said that they are not allowed to use it. The referral. They said that the resolution. They said that the resolution, 11-29. They said that the appointment of the president. They said that the clerk, the assignment.
Mr. Iba Taito, the resolution.
Senate Resolution Number 11-29. A Senate Resolution. Confirming the Presidential Appointment of Mr. Ngirai Velast Matuul to serve as the Minister of the Ministry of Human Resources, Culture, Tourism and Development of the Republic of Palau. The resolution, the presidential appointment of Mr. Ngirai Velast Matuul and the Minister of Human Resources, Culture, Tourism and Development. The resolution, Alul Dersi, President of the Senate, Jokons Paulas, by request. Senate Joint Resolution Number 11-7. A Senate Joint Resolution. To formally join the Formosa Club that is being established between Indo-Pacific Nations and the Republic of China, Taiwan, and to express support for the Republic of China, Taiwan's participation in the 74th General Assembly of the World Health Assembly as an observer. The resolution, formally, of the Formosa Club. They are allowed to go to Indo-Pacific Nations, the Republic of China, Taiwan. They are supporting the Republic of China, the participation at the 74th General Assembly, the World Health Assembly, and the observer. The Senate Joint Resolution Number 11-7. Alul Dersi, Senate Flo Lider, Cecilil Eldebel. Vice President, the Senate Cray Major. Senator Kazuki Eltab Sunyino. Senator Marco Erbala Rudim. Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte. Senator Andrew Tabalwal. Senator TJ Imru Ramosaw. Senator Rumi Songbao. Senator Jonathan Shoysal. And Senator Mason Ngire Avangal Wips. Senate Joint Resolution Number 11-8. A Senate Joint Resolution. Urging the judiciary to take all necessary and appropriate measures to ensure that all courts issue decisions within a reasonable timeframe in order to promote justice, protect the rule of law, and prevent unnecessarily lengthy litigation. The resolution, the judiciary, the court. They said that they are not allowed to go to the time. They are allowed to go to justice. They said that the rule of law is not allowed. They said that the court. The Senate Joint Resolution Number 11-8, Alul Dersi, Senator Jonathan Shoysal.
They said that the resolution, the presidential appointment of Mr. Ngirai Velast Matuul to the Minister of Human Resources, Culture, Tourism and Development. We assign the chairman to the JGA. They said that the committee on tourism. The committee on JGA will report. The club of the Palau, the China-Pacific. They are not allowed to go to Taiwan. We assign the chairman of Foreign Affairs. They said that they are not allowed to go to the Palau. The joint resolution urging the judiciary to appropriate measures to the court. We assign the chairman to the court. It's all. The presidential appointment of the senator is all. They said that they are not allowed to use it. Flo Lider.
President, they said that the resolution. They said that they are not allowed to use it. They said that they are not allowed to discuss. They said that the resolution is not allowed to discuss. They said that the resolution is not allowed to discuss. They said that they are not allowed to discuss. Senate Joint Resolution 11-7. The 11-8. They are not allowed to discuss.
Discuss. We will discuss the session. Flo Lider.
They said that they are not allowed to discuss. The item 15. They take note several communications. They said that the miscellaneous communication, 11-122. They said that they are not allowed to meet tomorrow. The director, Suraangal Wips Junior, said that the COFA Resolution Number 20-21-04. They said that they withdraw appropriate funds from the COFA Trust. They took note, the miscellaneous communication, 11-123. They said that the chairman, PNC, Mr. Ngirata Bort. The senator Agitaya, the delegate Sinzak. They said that they request the PNC. They said that they are not allowed to go to the law. They took note, the miscellaneous communication, 11-124. They said that the senator Agitaya. I guess in response to the communication, Ngirata Bort. They took note, the chairman Agitaya. The miscellaneous communication, 11-125. They said that the special prosecutor, the Senate official, the court reporter, FY, the second quarter FY 2021. The official SP. They took note, the miscellaneous communication, 11-126. They said that the Ministry of Finance, Bureau of Budget and Planning. They said that the 2020 to 2021 annual performance report. They took note, the miscellaneous communication, 11-127. They said that the FIB. They said that they are not allowed to go to the Senate. They solicited the FIC application. They said that they are not allowed to go to the FIC. They said that they are not allowed to go to the FIC. They took note, the miscellaneous communication, 11-128. The minister Caleb Wudui Junior. The mayor of Grid. They invited the mayor of Grid, the Chamber of Commerce. They said that they are not allowed to attend the economic symposium on tax reform. They are not allowed to go to the school. They took note, the miscellaneous communication, 11-129. They said that the minister Wudui. The minister Obi Am. The president Paulas. They said that the Palau National Infrastructure Investment Plan, 2030. They said that they are not allowed to discuss. They said that they are not allowed to discuss. They said that they are not allowed to discuss. They took note, the miscellaneous communication, 11-130. They said that the speaker, Mathias Erbey. They said that the president Paulas, Anna Stasiyo. They said that 50,000 earmarks for the state water system project. They said that the miscellaneous communication, 11-131. They said that Mr. Moses, Senator Inabo. They said that the Senate Bill 11-15. The Comprehensive Tax Reform Act. They said that, Mr. President, the miscellaneous communication. The item 16, miscellaneous business. The senators.
Miscellaneous business. Senator Tabalwal.
President, they said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school.
Senator Tabalwal. Flo Lider. Senator Mir. Songbao.
President, the president. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that, Mr. President, they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the store. They said that they are not allowed to rent a car. They said that they are not allowed to go to the FIB. They said that they are not allowed to go to the car for her. They said that they are not allowed to go to the recycling. They said that they are not allowed to go to the 500,000 to 600,000 dollars. They said that they are not allowed to go to the FIB. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the Ministry of Finance. They said that they are not allowed to go to the FIB. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the school. They said that they are not allowed to go to the FIB. They said that they are not allowed to go to the FIB. They said that they are not allowed to go to the Ministry of Finance. They said that they are not allowed to go to the tax. They said that they are not allowed to go to the tax. They said that they are not allowed to go to the FIB. They said that they are not allowed to go to the FIB. They said that they are not allowed to go to the FIB. They said that they are not allowed to go to the FIB. They said that they are not allowed to go to the FIB. They said that they are not allowed to go to the FIB.
Senator Songbao, not concerned. Senator Inabo.
Mr. President. Mr. President, they are not allowed to use it. They said that the miscellaneous communication, 11-127. They said that they are not allowed to go to the FIC. They said that they are not allowed to go to the FIC. They said that they are not allowed to go to the construction company. Mr. President, they are not allowed to go to the tax. They said that they are not allowed to go to the tax. They said that they are not allowed to go to the construction company. They said that they are not allowed to go to the construction company. They said that they are not allowed to go to the foreigner. They said that they are not allowed to go to the business. They said that immigration. permit ringi elwaseng residence. Mr. President tongkoradia karalla ndiakudangali ndingkala dia kappermit presiden sel mora adra angot alblu ngoral ahirel el lowureor al sugumang kirbelaw mal ubeng dependent asugumang beila ader belaw. Ma uh Mr. President ta ontikawa sing ana mugiradel edra construction el mo imore aigel protected business ra blur belaw. Ma akmal yolngitwa se bolse bela kamitirga emesa sel Foreign Investment Board Act el bolse edel edra construction companies batog aigil construction companies ra adra angot albluwal tigal mal compete al obanteya ader belaw. Maigel megakale construction companies ader belawa mal dakati len. Eh at the same time ndiakha ndiakha building code regida ma adaliam akmital bla ya waigal foreign owned companies sel orailing ndiakhangrang sel edel il gutmakliil mosuwira adel mla uh blila amal dakal lungil kaltmokla. Ma akmal bringer seegidel concern ngage Mr. President and I think ndikmedel waisel issue la race ringi a Senator Sangbao. Um ndiakate ledak tial alsel agaysa regida le er adra angot albluwa ngara alsel mal aggressive mang meringar regida gor si kiate al el guk mosabe edel gor mangargid ra alsel tial gaysa regid by ra adra angot albluwa mal mssisi el mangargida alsel. Ma akmal elwasel alsebe len ngaria mesangsel kamitirga emesa sel miscellaneous communication 11-27 eh datsegral waseng ngara immigration status ra aigil adi emakaran emo o FIAC Foreign Investment Permit. Asigunal miscellaneous Mr. President ta aurating ngaria issue ra bebe ra ader sorir mora medical referral. Um ndaksal matengal waseng ngara problem tiri diawgong mal meringala takes mal gamangal time mosab in marail and maukurula uh tokati ogiril waseng ngaranga ngaranga kahmal hold ak madengal waseng temela covid nineteen pandemi mang laptoka issues ndiakudangay endi tira gor sorir mo understanda ma ak yolngitwa dibol sebe la kamitirga find out olwaseng processing ra babier at tiaa meowda ngaria sebe edel change ringi tiaa mosab in marail maukurula al uba igang wuk processing requirement abalur at Taiwan ndiakal ndiakal sebe edel giridel dimengeel lerusandeeng edel sandeeng talboil emusabe edel maraila seegidakora di issue ngaria ader sorir asgak questionan giril ma akti bringer seegidel issue moruwal yolngitwa bolse bela kamitir kamitirga ra Health and Human Services yolngaseol giril seegidel issue sulan eh Mr. President.
Malongil concern Senator Inabo ndiregal atora adenamal goi di ndaksal madengel Senator Quartey tawaset meski ta digi teler room l'available merigida singgong meseada seegidel sel fi la ben ndiakal sebe ra ekstral adel momo di tawaseng ngar aigel bebe hospital sugumun sebe el elabora aigil bebe len di sel adalonglela Ministry ra a held ma a president ma singgong olwasigada magarang mora additional room ra aigil. Mossebe la akamudetra togal etabtokar sebe il maraila giril maraila ding rumang somsum seegidatara ala issue lolgoy ngi. Digamodu? Flo leader announcement.
Edaba announcement eh Mr. President.
Senator Shal.
Apa new instruction eh gimla ama Senator Sangbao shobabil ngamal mora namani Ngirait Matuul agitra il delivery service babier mo giril sel nomination ringi mora Ministry ma agi plan diliverse babier elang regel question kufulegi mera wera ten oklakra a Monday eh plan mo holda hiding JGA ma tourism kami rilgaura Monday ra mutrolbi ra ten em tegel masabir a available asepa support beklaadu mosaidil hearing Mr. President. Ten em Monday morning ra mutrolbi sulan.
Sulan. Senator Quartey.
Sulan President akti soal announcement omweal uureore ra 3 o'clock mori sel mitil ovangela Governors Association mapian osil giril sel Senate Bill number 11-31 sesel belaw games and beyond ra sel Satellite Office ra oreore Thursday ra 3 o'clock committee members are invited and open and mora ngiril Senator and soal me sulan.
Senator Inabo.
Mr. President tel announcement ngaa giril sel schedule ra Ways and Means Committee el momatmokla public hearing or sel Comprehensive Tax Reform Act mang omu ra next week ra Monday mori ngi Raay Tuesday in Isar uh Wednesday ngaringi a live talk show lobangela atara radio station amose edel guk makamenta tigel ndiakal sebe in meri public hearing. Uh Thursday ra tutau at ten AM ngaringi hearing lobangela PTA tamne specifically request wasel guk ngaringi hearing lileakal mora aigel hotel ma aigel goratour agencies seegidel gabasingera Thursday ngaringi hearing ra angiwal. Esel week after that eng guk mosataimilik ngatbang ngaramlungwi ngatmau eh sel week after that eng mori ngaraar ten aralong diregal mora hearing lobangira adra kekarel bluwa to open masonsurol eh quror state ten ayangala ya sel Monday el May 31 eh committee yolngitwa se bolse edel guliah hearing ra ngayawu mapliliw eda finisher ter hearing eda lay seegidegida namosabe edel guliah committee reporter tial luldasul molla um klo luldasul molla eh ya changes amo affect ra beklaad mang malgiril el maya mo waise ra buel wasetiang ngaralbele emarangamo impact ringi. Ma seegidan announcement eh Mr. President kamsulan.
Sulan Senator Inabo sel a Thursday ngaria tiala etax forum eh akumisra schedule ra ngaria hearing ra gorat ten oklak.
Oi sing la giril chenseringi mofraidi sulan.
Senator Sangbao.
Oe President tomaga May 6 el black schedule ringi a diregal ngaringi a hearing giril sel Senate Bill 11-21 sesel e bila IQPV ngaringi ra ten AM lobangela Governors Association ya 2 PM rausisulsil sel el al longewal uureore yolngangela State Speakers. Ma se aigil abed schedule limlakad aware seegidel aigil eh Economic Symposium ra el al longewal uureore ending kadirga katingir Governors and State Speakers koramil koradiregal uspe guidance aigiligo ahe de eh proceed President schedule koradiregal katingir Governors and me. Ka madengas sel sel Economic Symposium Mr. President ta momsada momsada tigil togal tax reform giril blol diregal gandaktingil lobangela public hearing lobantirar ad sebe la Chairman and Executive endi kaga aigel meeting guk plan schedule lobangela Governors ma speakers agiplam setingis seegidel silsa. Gor akamitirga yolngitwa al sugum gor at members akamitia gor afili President wasigada sebe galaw kontaktirtire ask kase de mo bringin mo full some other time goradiregal togtutrel seymo.
Kamiguntira short recess. Utel mogdo ngiyas session ergid mora order. Flo leader.
President el al silsa kadamo mosibritial second regular session ergid ma klemo usion adjornal sign atay.
Auera dabonge me di pokmutelti ala merengasulir rogui our senators kadam madengel waseng kadam mle talgibel malmasang mang mle kasa aigel luldasul molla el dakel kmocla ndi go kadamdaengel waseng bebe ra aigel malmokloututelela giril awltoil giril el al el kablamenta ergid. Magar di di timol gitra Chairman Rudim Aurelevsile Corporate Registry bolse beltara adamre edel uureore ngi klotutelle aigil amingir ngi. Di aigidaktunge sidamusionu namadung esegun tigel rogul go ngel bod adjorn esanadar tial session ergid relal longerul regular session ergid du oi.
Oi.
Om tok. Namai.